Ready to get started? Sorry. Ready to get going? Look at all these bales of seats. Sure, they don't have to sit in the back. You're all welcome to come up front.
Come on up front, you guys.
The, uh, yeah, the acoustics in this room can be a little challenging, so I wouldn't be shy if you want to be able to come here. Feel free to, to come right on up. All right. It is October 21st, 2025. My name is Jennifer Wingard. I'm the Girdwood Board of Supervisors co-chair. Calling this meeting to order this, the GBOS and LUC joint meeting regarding Holton Hills, Phase 1 conditional use permit for the development. For the Board of Supervisors, its committee and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.16.310 and the Anchorage Municipal Code 1.5 dash public meetings. We operate under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standard of Conduct. And starting with our land acknowledgement, I am going to hand it over to our LUC chair.
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, located between the areas known to be Denina and the Lutet homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Call it out separately. You want to have Mark?
Yeah, absolutely. Let's start with Mr. President. And Brian.
Here.
And the member Mike Edgington is excused and Kelly Sack is also excused. So we'll move on to Dan Bronberg.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. And then as far as the LUC members who are at the family, we have Brian, me, Bryce Lovins, and Lisa Tunnel.
All right, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Let's start with our agenda.
It's Mike Edgington here. I am present online.
Oh, sorry. All right, Mike. I'm glad you could join us. All right. Uh, we need to, I would indicate a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any changes or additions? Conversation. Okay. They get the general consensus that we're all set on that. All right. Well, welcome, everyone. I love the turnout and I, I love the commitment that this shows, that this town has our shared interest in the things that happen within Girdwood. And I would, I think what I would like to do is allow the CY Investment team a chance to introduce themselves here tonight. And so I'm going to toss this right over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm Connie Yoshimura. I am the owner of CY Investments. And as you all know, I won the RFP for the development at Holton Hills, which was approximately three years ago. I want to thank you for the opportunity to hold a second community meeting for Holton Hills as engagement with the community is important. Several years ago, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was the chair during, we were doing the Title 21 rewrite. And I want to let you know that I was the one that initiated the idea of a community meeting. So I do believe in hearing what it is that you have to say, even though I may not, as a developer, always agree with you. Since the first public meeting, which, which was approximately attended by 100 people, we heard the concerns presented about the safety of pedestrians going to and from the school and reached out, we reached out to the general contractor to coordinate for flaggers to be placed during drop off and pickup times. I went down the following day to observe that the flags were in place personally. We also heard about concerns regarding access to the Iditarod Trail. And I've spoken with Brian and the planning team met with them for a site visit. I want to make a public commitment to you today that we have made a commitment to have a kiosk identifying the Iditarod Trail. That location is yet to be determined. You also may have noticed that the offsite road and sidewalk have been paved. That happened, I think, yesterday, if I'm correct. Yeah.
Last week.
Last week. All right. Online, we are here tonight to hear your other concerns, such as the dark sky initiative. However, that will always be a three-way negotiation between us as the developer and the muni and what the wishes are for a little darker sky and lower lights. At this particular point, Lance, I just have to tell you I'm on their side.
Gotcha.
All right. All right. Online with us is George Passantino. Some of you have already had conversations with him. He is our community elite liaison. Holly Wells is a partner at Britcher and Bittner and Shro is the general counsel for CY Investments for Holton Hills. As Holton Hills is a public-private partnership, her experience in these areas has been very valuable to us. Lance Wilber is the director of planning, development, and public works, is able to answer questions regarding the offsite progress. Taylor Rounds with McCullum and Rounds will address the requirements of the AO. Tony Hoffman with the Boote Company is our planner for Holton Hills. And Brandon Marcott, the owner of Triad Engineering, is our lead principal engineer. They will go over the plat, which along the way has been adjusted. Tony will probably tell you 20 times in response to feedback received from the community and myself. Holly, I know there have been questions from the previous community meeting. If you'd like to go over your experience and any information you'd like to share regarding Title 21, ready to proceed?
All right. Madam Chair, do you? Okay. Yeah. All right.
Okay. So one of the questions that I was asked specifically at the last community meeting was why are we following procedures under Title 21 rather than Title 25? And I don't think I gave a very clear answer, in part because Title 21 governed the disposal of municipal property or public property. And so in 2021, all of those procedures regarding heritage, land bank, property were followed. I did review, and I, I'm sure I did not review everything, but I went back and I looked at the comments, the public process during that time, the meetings, the disposal process, the bid process, just to make sure that the municipality and CY Investments were tracking and going through that process. There were a couple areas where I found it very helpful that there had been sort of a, they had gone back and done another meeting. There were a lot of comments, a lot on the GBOS front, a lot on the heritage land bank front. And over the next really three or two years, we saw that process fine tuned. And so I think what may have happened is those procedures regarding meetings applied to that process and that has happened. And then we have sort of this gap in time. And now we are at the process in which CY Investments and the municipality in this, under the development agreement and in this sort of public-private partnership structure, they are now moving forward through the land use process. And that's the process by which the permits are issued and the, the responsibilities and obligations of both the municipality and CY Investments and the elaboration between the two will now march through all of those steps under Title 21. So I don't know if I just made things more confusing or helps, but I wanted to make sure we understood why we're talking about two titles. A few times the Title 21 was referred to as a statute, or Title 25 was referred to as a statute. And I think all of those references, because I did go to the statute to see if I was missing something, I also looked at the Alaska Land Act, the Municipal Entitlement Act, to see if there was something there that we weren't seeing. I also looked at some of the other federal and state laws that CY Investments and the municipality will need to pay attention to. Right? Those are laws regarding waters of the United States, for example, buttlands and what needs to happen and where those are. But I, it's my understanding that those are being followed rigorously and that those, there's no, there's no gap in an understanding of where the jurisdiction of those federal and state entities come into play and they're being navigated. That said, if someone has any questions specific to that, I would encourage you to get those to George so George can get those to me. Because I think one of the greatest value, it's value added of these community meetings is that we don't miss anything that is important to the community or the project.
Thank you, Holly. Lance, you're next.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name's Lance Wilber. I work in the Permit Center, Planning, Development, and Public Works. So also, one of the departments that reports to me is the Heritage Land Bank. And so the Heritage Land Bank, and I've also got Tiffany Briggs, who's the director of HLB on there. And as Holly mentioned and as Connie mentioned, for those of you who, there might be someone in this room who is not familiar with the partnership that we have through a development agreement with CY Investments, as Connie had mentioned. So as part of the development agreement, we have sort of three major roles as the Heritage Land Bank. One of them is to work with them to come up with a development that works basically for Girdwood, HLB, the community as a whole. Financially, the Heritage Land Bank in that agreement is responsible for funding those offsite improvements that were just completed. Everything that will happen inside the subdivision, inside the development, those will be the responsibility and the cost of the developer. So as we were working through the offsite, a lot of questions that we had previously and since our first community meeting was the cost of the project and what about the trash that was found and what, what happened to it? And what's the total cost of that total project? The original bids for the road came in at roughly $2 million. We are still waiting for all of the invoices to come in for the offsite improvements, the road improvements themselves, other than the fact that we ran into some trash that we had to move and then excavate and haul off. That just recently, you know, that concluded about a month ago. The, the cost of what that's going to be to us will be part of what we're looking for. When we originally set aside the funds for this project, we set aside a 20% contingency to make sure, and that's typical for any engineering or project, somewhere between 10 and 20% for contingency. So, I mean, right now, I can't say that it's probably going to be pretty close within the contingency, but if you have questions about that, I'll be able to answer some of them with the information that I have. But until we get those final invoices and through the agreement, they have 30 days to do that. And as Brendan just mentioned, they just finished the paving last week. So as those, as that information comes forward. The last piece I'll mention is, again, the conditional use planned unit development process that they are just now getting into on the onsite development pieces. They are required to submit a, an application that will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They're, the process of preparing that now. The Heritage Land Bank is looking at that because we are in a partner with them. We will then submit it to the planning department. They will get a review of it. And I believe the schedule is yet before planning and zoning for their public process will occur in January. So looking forward to working with that and any questions that we get later on. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Taylor, we're going to skip down to you next. All right.
The recording. The song? All right. Hello, everyone. Taylor Rounds, real estate attorney in Anchorage. See some familiar faces here from the last community meeting. My office is involved with implementing the requirements of the AO in terms of the property covenants and homeless association requirements. At the last meeting, there was lots of questions that were geared towards owner occupancy requirements and short-term rental restrictions. And I think the, the term owner occupancy was getting conflated with short-term rentals. And I think that was causing some confusion. The, the AO does not have an owner occupancy requirement. It, it does have requirements for short-term rentals. And practically speaking, an owner occupancy requirement for property covenants isn't realistic to, to require someone to be physically present for a certain amount of time. You set an arbitrary time. Is it six months? Is it three months out of the year? And then life happens if, if somebody cannot be there. Is it a violation of the H2A documents? You're going to find them if they have to leave town for medical purposes. It's just a messy area to try to physically require someone to occupy their home for an arbitrary number of days. And that's not what the AO requires. The, the AO does require that CY Investments put covenants on the property that restricts short-term rentals. Any single-family homes, short-term rentals are prohibited, anything less than 30 days. And then 50% of the multifamily properties will be restricted. And ADUs are a separate category. If a single-family home has an ADU, there's no short-term rental restriction on that. So the, the requirements of the AO, we are in charge of drafting covenants that implement that. It's got to go back, meaning our goal is to prepare covenants that comply with the intent sphere of what the AO requires. And so we're working with CY Investments and with the muni to do that. The second topic that was discussed at the last meeting was a request to have some sort of first option to purchase or write a first refusal or local preference for residents of the community when these, when these lots are for sale. And I looked into that since the last meeting, did some research. I talked to Chris Constant, somebody after the meetings, that, that he had mentioned a project down in California that had done successfully. I looked up that project and several others throughout the country. And the reality is that trying to do that, any form of that, would expose CY Investments and the municipality to potential information. You've got state statutes prohibit discrimination, unfair or unequal treatment in housing. You've got municipal code provisions that practically say the same thing. No one with real property could not treat people unfairly in selling, leasing, offering housing. And then you've got a state constitution with equal protection laws. And our Alaska equal protection clause seems stronger than the federal 14th Amendment. And the reality is, it may be some places like this place in California, doesn't look like they consider this, other projects have. And the reality is that doing that is a huge risk and it opens up litigation. And it's not a risk that CY Investments foreally the muni could take.
So Brandon and Tony, you're here. You've worked from the very beginning, from the RFP actually, on a design and project post, what a plat potentially might look like and also how to manage, and how to manage the construction and the design. So we'd like to hear from the two of you together.
I'll just brief, brief introduction. Brandon Marcott with Triad Engineering. My role here was to, from the start, to assist the design team, Tony and Connie, with conceptual layouts of the Peter Platts, density configurations, utility solutions to provide service to those lots and kind of help bet the concept as we move the ball forward through the planning process. After that, my role was to design the offsite improvements and figure out how to get infrastructure from High Tower Road up to the edge of Phase 1, to the south edge of Phase 1. That included the extension of a 12-inch sewer main, the 16-inch water main, as many of you know, is already there. That alignment exists and was serving as a pretty popular blocking trail. We also extended road and street lighting to that, to the edge of the project as well. Part of that process included an extension of N-Star Gas Utilities, the south end of the project, and then relocation of CD's power to Awo's PRB station. So those facilities were underneath the planned road improvements, so we had to get those relocated out of the way. Part of that process involved trash discovery that delayed the project by roughly three to four weeks as we dealt with the environmental component of that. Thankfully, all of the samples came back effectively non-detect. I wouldn't say non-reportable, but basically ADEC spill prevention was not concerned with the test results that we were receiving back. So we got the approval to continue with our excavation and take that material to Highland, to Highland facility. So all the debris that we encountered was excavated, removed, and remedied to Highland, replaced with good clean gravel from Anchorage. And as Lance mentioned, paving, as we all know, finished last Thursday, so we're happy to support that. There's some time for weather, colder weather. A few items remain. There'll be some guardrail installation. We're expecting three lights in December. Those poles, the bases are in, but the poles will likely be in, in December. And then temporary gate will be installed and then likely striping in, in the spring with more conditions. Tony?
Okay. My name's Tony Hoffman. I'm a surveyor and planner with the Boote Company. And we've been working on this project for about three or four years now. We did that original track plat in 2022. We were here in front of everybody. At that time, this subdivision plat and application are being processed, as already been discussed, as a planned unit development. And we're using the conditional use application process at the city. It'll all be heard together at planning and zoning. So the, we're, we're making, we're going to deliver the first draft, what they call the review copy of the entire application will go into the city. And there's a bit of a process, but basically within two weeks after that, it'll be done and all their copies will be delivered to them and then it will be open to public review. As everybody knows, the property is heavily encumbered by buttlands and steep slopes on both sides. That water transmission line that runs through the property, that I'm sure a lot of people here walk along that trail and such, that is, that has created the corridor that the road will be placed on. And then the new sewer line will be built on the east side of the water line. The water line is a 16-inch transmission line. It'll be tapped for every one of the lots. So east lot will have available good water and good flow, actually. The subdivision layout is going to create 39 lots and two tracks. We've maximized, we've maximized the design of the layout. So for view, view sheds and, and basically just good views. It's the best we can do with the corridor. The steep slopes on the east and west side. So the corridor of that water line has created a good, a good road profile. So it will be a fairly effective build in that regard because that water line's there. The, our, the lots are all designed, except we have two lots, and I'm sorry, we don't have that schematic up here I could point at. But there's two large lots that are designated as multifamily. We're, we're requesting a multifamily development style, which can be anything, it can be townhouses, it could be apartment style, it could be duplexes, it could be any number of, of styles. All the other lots are designated as single or duplex. They're all wide enough, even the 50-foot lots are wide enough for a 40-foot duplex, which is not an uncommon size. And it, it does provide us a low, a bit of a lower price point on some, some, some units. Oh, yeah. And so the last meeting, there was some discussion about the trail, the Iditarod Trail. We're all, we're all concerned about that. And there is going to be one area where we're going to have to move it a little bit to get it right on our boundary. So it's right next to Glacier Creek and right on our eastern boundary. My surveyor, one of my survey crew met Kyle and Brian, I think, Tuesday and they, Tuesday or Monday, and they walked, walked in and identified that stretch and looked at the realignment potentials and other construction ideas that they have for the trail. So we're very cognizant of the trail, especially the Iditarod Trail. And we're going to do everything we can to, in pristine shape and available. So I think that's all I have.
All right. I think we're available here for questions.
So thank you. But before we jump into that, I wanted to give Brian Vernon a chance to speak to some of the trails discussions that had happened. Did you want to do that now?
Yeah, I'd be pretty glad to. Thanks a lot. Thanks to everybody in the community for coming out this evening. I appreciate everybody taking advantage of the second meeting to engage with CY Investments. And thank you for making yourselves available out here. Those of you that were in the, in the first meeting over in the Meadows Room in the chapel, you recall, we spoke briefly there about the need to relocate the portions of the Iditarod Trail so that it did not conflict with lots that were being built. We were concerned about trail placement in between the development and the banks of Glacier Creek and, and how to manage back there. I was invited to have coffee with Connie and we, we met up at a, at a local coffee shop and had some discussions about trails. And then Mr. Hoffman made one of his surveyors available a couple of days later. And I was able to round up Kyle, Will Brennan, Deb Essex, and myself. And we went out with the surveyor to look at the trail alignment and, and see where we were going to need to make adjustments to the alignment to get around six lots that are, are going to be encroaching on the current trail alignment. The terrain to build through is going to be a little more complex than the terrain the trail is on right now, but it is all manageable and it's, and it's terrain that, that many trail professionals have built through in the past. And we don't see much of a problem with the actual issue of building trails and realignment. As we're working on this, from a Trails Committee perspective, we're going to be working with, hopefully, Mr. Hoffman and CY Investments on how to survey the entire trail alignment, how to identify the, once the trail is, is surveyed, how we can create easement on that trail. Because currently, right now, that section of trail, Anchorage, would just not have anything. We need to get that to protect the trail in, into perpetuity. As the trail is getting realigned, the trail is also going to need to come up to, up to a higher standard of trail. It's going to see more use. And to bring it into a sustainable, a sustainable type trail, it is going to require some, some additional use for the entire length of that trail, which is going to be a great thing. It's going to become another, it is going to continue to be a gem in our community. But we'll be working with Connie on, on the easements, trail alignments, and working through Trails Committee, Land, Land Use Committee, and GBOS. Did I get that right?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for standing up.
All right. Is there anything we can do? Are you guys having trouble hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
You put the microphone supposed to your mouth. Yeah, make sure they're on.
All right. Well, let me just try speaking this way. Is this, can you hear better now? Is that working here? All right. So it's on. All right. What's that? Does it hurt? Okay. So tonight is a, it's a little bit of a different format for those of you who were at the last community meeting. This is a joint GBOS/LUC meeting. As such, we do things by our usual rules. So there's no new rules for this, but just a reminder that they are, it's a, it's a little bit of a different format than what was done before. So we have the same guidelines for participation as in our regular meetings. It goes like this. We are encouraging questions and comment, but we ask you to raise your hand, for those of you online, if you will raise your hand, be acknowledged, not yet. And then to help produce, to help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board or these, the members up front rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business of your discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Also, in the, in these joint GBOS meetings with LUC, we generally start with the board. So we'll start with the board first with questions and then we'll open it up. The, one option here for the room to make this easier is that you can line up in these seats here. Or, or you can raise your hand if you feel more comfortable with that. And I will be trying to alternate the best I can between people online and the peoples in the room. So with that being said, I want to open it up to any members of either LUC or So with that being said, I want to open it up to any members of either LUC or GBOS if anybody has any questions. All right. Would you like to start?
Yeah. Thank you. My first question is for Taylor. So in determining the unrealistic nature of the, like first right of refusal, basically, other communities like Crested Butte, I know, has a program where there's like a cap basically on how much you can sell a property for, once you sell it. And so it, it makes the cost of entry lower. And I'd be interested in hearing if that is something that is legally tenable in Alaska, not necessarily right now. Or if you've heard anything like that.
So if I understand your, is this on? You guys hear me? Okay. A cap on the resale is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's like, there's like a, you can't sell it for over some percentage of, I think, market value or something like that.
So I have heard of programs where there's a cap on the resale, but, and then the developer takes a portion of, of profits and then invests it back into the project. The, the problem that we ended up running into, started tackling this, is if you put that cap on just the first resale, fine, potentially you could do that. But then second resale, third resale down the road, and where does this stop? And how do you keep up with inflation? And is it, is it really realistic? And so I think there's a lot of logistical problems with, with just putting a hard cap on it. To me, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. It's, it's not a requirement in the ordinance. It's, it's not an issue that I've looked at for this project. I think it's a complicated issue. I have looked at it in the past on other projects. It's complicated.
I can, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Sure.
So I'll just add to that on a constitutional front, just to give you a little bit of the playing field that we have to navigate in Alaska that is different than almost every other state, but for Hawaii maybe, because they also have a constitutional right to privacy. So one of the things that we have to look at is one government action. So when the ordinance was passed, unlike a, something that's happening on the private sector, we now have a government actor. And when we have, and I realize you all understand that, but when we have a government actor who limits the, for example, a cap on the sale price, they are in essence, limiting an individual or private, and a person who would be purchasing, who would be then selling, right? In another state, there might be more flexibility. Actually, there is more flexibility in those arenas. In Alaska, that sort of strong sense of autonomy and independence translated into this, this express right to privacy, really tying our hands in some of those ways that you don't see in other places. So it doesn't, it doesn't mean that there isn't a way to apply a cap, but it means there wouldn't be a way to mandate a cap via the ordinance, because that's government action. And so then you would be looking at, say, CY Investments just applying a cap to itself. And then you would look at, there were requirements under the development agreement and the arguments that they would be breaching that by not getting, you know, by not selling the property and marketing the property in accordance with the best interests of Heritage Land Bank. Because on the other side of all of these discussions is the taxpayers, you know, and that concept that there's a fiscal purse and it needs to be filled. So it's that concept. And I'm not saying, you know, don't shoot the messenger. It's just that concept that when you don't earn a dollar, it's a dollar you didn't earn for the taxpayers. That informs a lot of the case law we see in this arena. So I'm not sure if that.
And it is in the development agreement that the lots will not be sold for less than .5 million. And there's.
Yes. Curious where the guardrails going and what the water supply supplies now, and if that will be affected at all by additional fall on it from. Good question. The guardrail is going about the upper, one third of the project on the downhill side, kind of where the road comes down and curves. The road kind of comes up against Glacier Creek. That slope's fairly steep. We wanted to ensure that any cars coming around that corner didn't progress over the edge and into the creek. So we felt it appropriate to put in, I think it's about 200 feet of guardrail on that section. The water supply, to my knowledge, in talking with AWU, is more than adequate. We've talked to them extensively many years ago now about using that water transmission main for services for these lots. And they confirmed that we can tap that, tap that main and use it for service for the lots. We also, there was questions in the last meeting regarding fire concerns. And we do plan to put in fire hydrants along this space where we have water supply and not expecting to have any issues with water flow at this time.
Thanks.
One of the things that I was wondering if, I heard you speak on value in the trees. And I was wondering if as part of this plan, with the easements could be dedicated to space where the trees are not cut, if that could be a part of the development agreement? Because one of the things that we see in Gerwood, because we're so far from the watchful eye of, of the muni, is that before somebody even goes to get a land, they will take a piece of property and just cut every tree from one side to the other. And that's not of value to any. So that could be part of the.
You want me to answer?
Let me turn it back up.
Trees do have aesthetic value for any community and.
Yeah, I don't, it's all right.
I think, where's the button?
Can you hear me in the back? Is that better? Just gotta speak loud.
Can you hear this? All right. Okay. Well, I do believe trees have aesthetic value. And we have been known to find general contractors and excavators if they cut trees down unnecessarily. We have also been known to, driven certain trees that we feel should stay. Now, having said all that, the problem really is when someone comes in to build a house, they need to get their equipment in to do the excavation. And generally speaking, that's about 20 feet around the, the excavating hole, the foundation area. And there isn't anything that we can, we can do about that. We do have and will have a landscape plan, which we've implemented in the past, designating certain types of trees that we're trying to, we're figuring out the type of tree here that's going to grow and not die. And trees and shrubs, we're also very interested in foundation shrubs to add to the aesthetic value of a home, especially at the front of the house.
Thank you all for following up on questions from last meeting and for being here tonight. I also have a question for Brandon Mark about the guardrail. It's my interest. And I ask because I've seen guardrails go in other places where there was eliminated the shoulder, and then it looked like a very unsafe spot to be, if you're a biker or pedestrian. But forgive me for not looking at the map. Is there still a bike path or a pedestrian way on the other side of that guardrail? Or where exactly in that top there would be?
Sure. Good question. So the eight foot pathway exists on the upland side of the road. The guardrail will be on the downhill side between the road and Glacier Creek. We are, or we did widen the road an additional three and a half to four feet to accommodate the guardrail. So yes, the, the shoulder, the paved shoulder, if you will, there's three and a half feet of paved shoulder on either side of the actual travelway of the road. Those are still unobstructed.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the board? I have one quick follow-up for Holly. When you were, I have another process. I heard you say that, I think what you said is that Title 21 was applying to the land use process and permits. But I was just double checking if that's what you meant. It sounds like at some point, does Title 25 kick in?
So.
Where's the button? It's on. I think it's on. Yeah, I think it's on.
So I think that the process of the disposal of the property took place at the time of the RFP and that decision regarding what type of procurement process is used and what public process surrounds that competitive bidding process. And now we move into the, you have the development of the property and you have the use of the property. And that, those, those laws will continue to be at play, not just for the development of the property, but also for the life of the property, just like all other, you know, municipal lands within, within outside.
Okay. So it's Title 21 through left?
Yeah. Yes.
Perfect. Okay. All right. So I'd like to open up to questions from the room. And I'd like to point out that we have, there's a timer in the upper left-hand corner. If you see the screen, for those of you who are in the screen, right above where it says Kyle Kelly, and it shows the video of there's a timer right there. So you'll be able to see where you're at in terms of how long you're taking for your questions. And I'd like to start with people in the room and with Tony, because I saw you move up.
Thank you.
I was waiting. There's, is there a mic?
Got a mic? All right. I'd like to address everybody here. You're here because you care about the community. They're here because they have to be. They messed up, didn't do the meeting right. They're here because they have to be. They're paid to be here. And I want to thank you all for holding their feet to the fire, to get them to do what they're supposed to do. But they have already demonstrated that they don't care for our community sensibilities. And they don't have to. It's in the law. They're doing, to the letter of the law. And it's really too late to go back and change things and to protect our community. What I think we need to concentrate on is for the next time. We never thought that this could happen because it was too expensive. But the state or the muni put in water for them. They got the RFP when there were two people working for Heritage Land Bank. Neither of them had a real estate license. I appreciate a good bamboozle. I grew up here, lived through the pipeline. Sometimes you just got to let one of them go. And, but you guys have to watch out for the next time. We really didn't know. We didn't put restrictions or covenants or limits. And they don't have to follow any of them. And they're paid to be here and they got attorneys. We don't have attorneys here. So I don't know. It's hard to just let it happen. Perhaps some of the people who may be able to afford these, land or to build here, maybe they'll actually be able to live here and become part of our community. That's my hope for this bamboozle. My mama said, there's always room for good people. And I'm hoping for that to come from this. But for the rest of this, we blew it. Or we didn't think it could happen. So yeah, thank you for listening.
No, you're, oh, you're sitting. Okay. Who wants to like to speak in the room? And I will take, Dorothy, I do see her here online. I'm going to take one or two more in the room and then we'll, we'll go to you. But, oh, and I forgot, but those of you who are longstanding, like I know Betsy knows this, if you would, speak your name and.
I'm Betsy Kinnell, and I'm sure you've seen me at a lot of these meetings before. I haven't walked up the road lately. Is the paving complete?
Yes.
And what was the company that did that paving?
McKenna.
McKenna. My question is about the stop signs. And I don't know who on the panel is in charge of that, but the signs say four-way stop, and it's not a four-way stop, it's a three-way stop. And I'm just curious, since Hightower is already a high-usage road, and we're having a new road, could the Houghton Hills Drive come into that? Wouldn't the Houghton Hills Drive stop and the main traffic keep going?
Thank you for your question. The three-way stop was directed to us by traffic, the traffic department with MOA. Currently, I think the communities where that the, the north and southbound stop signs are bagged, so that people aren't stopping unnecessarily. We originally had planned for a single stop sign on Houghton Hills Drive, but we're directed through the review comment period with the municipality to add north-facing and south-facing stop signs on.
Then again, through comment?
Through the review comment with the municipality, when we were permitting the offsite improvements, the traffic department has an opportunity to comment, and they require additional stop signs.
So they, they would be the people to contact?
Yes, ma'am.
What would be a good person's name?
I think Randy's retired now. Travis Just would probably be a good option. Brad McCoy is the traffic engineer, the municipal traffic engineer over there, but I think Travis might have more knowledge of the project.
Thank you very much. That will be a whole new thing. I can say for myself, when I left school, on the first day that those signs were up, I didn't even see them. People told me later, oh, there's, you know, stop signs there. But I think people are so in the groove of how to get through there that, that's potentially dangerous.
Thank you. Brandon, I'd like to take Dorothy's question. Dorothy, do you have a question? You're showing your hand up online. Right. Yes, you're also in good time. In the meantime, let me see who else in the room would have a question. See. Two, three, one. All right. Dorothy, we're going to move on and I'll try again after this.
Mike Kiffin, 364 Cortina. How was the 50% of Airbnb, you said half of the lots for, is that phase two are, are, how's that decided? Like, is that pricing? Like, people pay more and they can rent it?
Well, what, what the ordinance says is that CY Investments will restrict the use of single-family and 50% of the multifamily properties to prohibit short-term rentals.
Right? So that. How is that decided? Like, so which 50%?
So we're crafting covenants. And again, we're crafting covenants to comply with the intent of this. And so the covenants are going to say, if, if the lot is developed as a single-family home, then you can't use short-term rentals unless you also build an ADU. And then you could, you could keep in a short-term lease with the ADU, right?
Okay.
And if you have lots with, with multiple dwellings, you're in the realm of the multifamily properties, the covenants are going to say that no more than 50% of the dwelling units within that property can be used for short-term rentals.
So the first 50% that's bought would get that, would get the right to Airbnb it? And then the next 50% wouldn't?
No, we'll, we'll apply it on a, just a per lot basis. So.
But is that a price difference or something? Like, or how do you decide if this lot is okay to Airbnb and that one's not?
Well.
My question.
As the, the land developer, we don't decide what gets built on the lot. Right? That's not a.
Oh, okay. So to, all right.
Yeah. Somebody, if somebody buys a lot and builds a single-family dwelling, then they will be subject to the restriction on short-term rentals. If somebody buys a lot and builds a duplex or a multi-dwelling apartment-style building, they're going to be limited to 50% of those dwelling units in that lot will be prohibited with short-term rentals.
Oh, 50% of the, all right. So you could, if you have a duplex, you can rent one, but not two. All right. Thank you. Is there a maximum number of lots? Is there a maximum number of lots that can be bought by any one person? Can somebody just come and buy them all?
In theory, somebody could.
Can we do anything about that? It's like, you know, somebody's just got millions to give you guys. Can, can we like say that they can only buy 10 or 20 or something? Anyway, something to think about. As a general contractor, can I build my own house there if I buy a lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And do we have a, like an idea what a lot is going for? I mean, I'm sure they're gonna vary, but like.
Well, I was pretty outspoken in the last meeting.
I missed it, sorry.
Yeah, I said that we had a smaller lot for $188,000, but I have to tell you that we don't have our cost estimates in, we won't until after sometime in spring. And I am required to sell these lots at no less than appraised value.
Right.
That's according to the development agreement.
Do you have any idea what the highest appraised value is? Like 167 is probably the lowest and that's a good deal around here. What do you think the highest is gonna be? Is it like Verbier 400,000 prices or more?
We do have lots that are similar to those that you just mentioned. Yes.
General projected price like two something, two low, two 20 or, or do we know yet?
We're gonna ask questions. We have costs. You're a general contractor, you know you're not gonna price something until you have a good idea of what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Right? So we're in that same position. We need to know what it's going to cost us and then we have to get an appraisal on the property.
All right, let me give a, let me give a chance to ask some questions. And let me just check Dorothy first, if you're available.
Trying to unmute it. Oh, am I unmuted? All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Dorothy Hickinbotham and my question is, Hightower Road, there's a lot of stuff on that road, the post office, the grocery store. People walk constantly all day long crossing that road and this summer was pretty scary with those huge trucks barreling down Hightower. Are you, is there a plan or who would be in charge of putting maybe lighted crosswalks like on Aliaska Highway there? Because I think Girdwood had to pay for that one and that was about $250,000 for that little crosswalk. Do you have any plans to improve Hightower at all?
Excuse me. Dorothy, thank you for your question. This is Brandon with Tribe Engineering. At this time, there is no plans for upgrading Hightower Road beyond what we've, we haven't really touched it with the offsites, but I can tell you that with phase one, there's no anticipated improvements to Hightower.
Thank you.
All right, I see your hand up, but again, I'm just told Amanda that, or it signaled Amanda that she could go next, but I see three, so I'll put you on the floor.
All right, first of all, I brought you guys some documents. You know, none of these documents I'm handing out are actually anything of my opinion. They are all the regulations and policies governing this valley. Yeah, 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 I'm gonna let those go. I'm gonna start with two questions. First of all, what is the minimum residency you're expecting out of all three phases? How many people are you expecting to be able to live in all three phases when this project is completed?
I believe I've answered that question previously and.
Again.
The initial quote that I gave was 187 lots over 60 acres. And if you look at national standards or local standards for that, that would be approximate, I believe, three dwelling units, three to three and a half dwelling units per acre.
Because I'm considering numbers here just for, so really what I wanna get down to, to explain to people that the entire grasp of this project, this is a large scale complex project by municipal codes. Our current population to date is only between 1,900 and 2,000 people. But unfortunately, too, the shortcomings of the disposal regulations being met still falls on the responsibility of this project. This project cannot go forward without meeting Title 21 and Title 25 compliance codes that both require a downstream impact assessment to be conducted. Additionally, the hazards must be identified and mitigated, including impacts on the MOA levy along California Creek and downtown New Girdwood, through Ruane Culverts and the federally listed Old Girdwood levy. This project will cause an environmental disaster in this community due to the lack of wetland and watershed mapping. Even the road that was recently restored needs to be reviewed immediately. There is no data in our watershed, for our watershed in this valley and the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan does not address any of these issues. The first page in the packet I have given to you is the study boundary area of the 2006 plan. The next three pages are the entire environmental section, which falls extremely short and does not meet Title 25 definition of a land use plan due to its failure to identify natural hazards and land use compatibilities with adjacent areas. This is also where the traffic use study should have been done. So the next pages after that, I attached HOB's Title 25 compliance for your reference. Girdwood's culvert system, culverts are failing throughout this entire community. Your recent road installation could even be the hair that breaks the camel's back. Okay, your project has potentially already increased water flow into the California Creek drainage. October is our flash flood month and October 21st, the 264 inch Ruane Culverts on California Creek blew out due to the culverts being submerged and then failing. Much of our community's large equipment that can respond to these types were inaccessible due to the road washing out. A larger culvert was not installed in the emergency repair. Currently, the community is figuring it out how to fundraise to cover the cost of a larger culvert that we can hopefully have within two years.
And I'm sorry.
Okay, just one second, please. We are literally one atmospheric storm away from our environmental catastrophe happening in this community due to lack of the management of our waters. The MOA 2007 Drainage Design Guidelines require a field inspection of the 10th conveyance route at a minimum. I've attached three pages from that document stating the requirement and the explanation of what the 10th conveyor route is. This, the downstream assessment must happen before you guys go forward with any more permitting.
I believe you are next. Are they gonna respond or? Do you lose? I just wanna make carry a blind up. Do we have any responses from the table? Okay.
Holly, on this one.
This one's.
So one thing I will say, I mean, I have, we have reviewed all of the plans that are in effect and apply to the project and we're in compliance with them. That's what I'm hearing in addition to the frustrations regarding the provisions of the, of Title 25 is concern regarding watershed and, and what's happening downstream. And so that is one of the things that I will make sure that we're looking at and talking to any other agencies. That's another, we really need to make sure that we're working alongside and paying attention to those requirements, which, which CY Investments has done, but to the extent that there's comfort in having a sort of checklist of what's being done for those properties, I think that our team can work together to create that checklist. So it's not just a, hey, we're following all the rules. The other thing I wanted to say is, when we look at these provisions regarding Heritage Land Bank property, Title 25 deals with the disposal of that municipal property and that's 25.40. It also deals with the management of that property, but at this stage, the property we're talking about is, has been taken out of that pool and it's in the development phase and it will be sold and it will be subject to solely Title 21 upon its sale, except for properties to the extent Heritage Land Bank retains or purchases.
I see a lot of comments from you. My point is.
Actually, Amanda, let me let other people speak first and if we have extra time, because we do have a list coming and so Paula and then Paula after that and then Chase.
Thea Ritter, St. Johann Loop, Girdwood. I have three main points I'd like to make. The first is, you said that you would restrict short term rentals for single family homes, but 50% for duplexes. You said that you'd sell 39 lots and they could be single or duplex. So couldn't all 39 lots go for duplex and then there would be 50% restriction? There would be no single family homes at all?
No.
No.
How about now?
Really?
Let me just try to assure you, say that certainly is not the intent for all of these properties to be duplexes. As you know, the municipality of Anchorage recently rezoned all our one land to also accommodate a duplex. So we are only following the code as it's been established by the municipality of Anchorage.
It sounds like though, from Taylor, that you can put restrictions, like the short term rental restrictions, which Anchorage does not have. So you could say, for example, out of those 39 lots will allow, have to be duplexes and have to be single family homes in a way to restrict short term rentals. Isn't that a possibility?
Is it on, can you guys hear me? So yeah, it is a possibility, but again, like Holly mentioned earlier, making the best and highest use of the property for the taxpayers, trying to get the highest value for the property. You also run into logistical issues if you say these lots are for duplex, these lots are for single family. Again, we're not controlling who builds or what gets built on the property. That decision is being made by the person who buys the property and then they will go through the proper channels and permitting processes to build what they want. So that is, that is out of our control whether they want to build a single family or duplex. What we're doing is putting in the short term rental restrictions to fly with the AO and also encourage people to owner occupy to the extent that short term rental restrictions do that.
And how did you choose 50%? Why not 75% for example?
That's what the AO required.
Okay. My next point is speeding. My timer, okay. Um, so I'm a mother of a three year old, we bike a lot, myself and other moms, we bike a lot with our young kids. The contractors, we call it white van syndrome, contractors speeding through Girdwood and you cannot slow them down. It doesn't matter what signs you make to them, if you yell at them, they will not slow down. I don't think speed signs are gonna help. What I think would help are speed humps. Girdwood, Anchorage has speed humps on roads that are 30 miles per hour and it does slow people down. So I don't think flashing lights, limit signs are gonna help much because if the contractor's tools all get jammed up in the back of his truck, he's gonna slow down to go over this speed hump. Okay, my third point is trash and recycling. What is the impact gonna be? We don't have recycling in this town, which is insane. Have you looked at the impact of trash and recycling on 187 lots and that increasing our waste transfer facility? Thank you.
I could speak briefly to the speed humps thing. That's something that's possible to propose. We've done that on previous projects and I can tell you that, again, the traffic department looks negatively upon those. They don't see them as a viable solution. Mainly they see it as more of a Band-Aid on a problem instead of solving a problem. I'm just saying, I'm just saying we've proposed it on other projects and it's been shot down. They also see it as a response issue with the fire department. So it's something that we have tried on previous projects and it has not been successful. I'm not saying that's not something that we can't propose again here. I'm just telling you, we, we do face some headwinds from traffic on that. In response to the recycling and trash, no, we have not, or I have not looked at increases to the waste management.
Thank you. And I, I do, I want the room to know that in a situation where the table is needing to provide a more detailed answer, it doesn't need to take all of your time. So I appreciate if you had your questions written out and that you were unconscious for the time, but I do think. I'm also gonna reiterate for people online that if you are interested in asking questions, you do need to raise your hand because otherwise you can't, so raise it at any point and add to the queue and then that being said, Paula, you.
Hi, Paula Bocken. Do I have to give my address?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I do have a number of questions, just listening. I didn't, I missed the first meeting, but I do have questions not only for your group, but also for the group that supervises Girdwood. So one question that came up when you were talking, Brian, is who is paying for these rail reconfigurations and the replating that is required due to the construction that's happening?
So previously, the only other trail realignment that is happening in Girdwood was the Winter Creek Extension Trail and that entire project was financed by Alia Sco Resort.
So who's doing the relining or these ones?
I would say it's probably still in negotiation. We need to convene as Girdwood Trails Committee to come up with a plan for the committee.
Okay, great. And then I know that there was not a traffic study required, but you also promised a traffic control plan for public review. And I keep hearing traffic issues that keep coming up. And so, yes, you're working with planning, zoning or right of way, whatever, but have you even asked the community on what kind of traffic control would be best? Because these people live here, they understand the school traffic, they understand the Hightower traffic, the post office, the grocery stores. Why aren't you asking for public opinion on the traffic control? You can answer that after because I have a lot of other stuff to talk about. So write that down. So as part of shoving Holton Hills through, one of the things they said was there was gonna be two lots that had fourplexes for affordable housing. Is that still the case? And if that's the case, who is controlling those lots so that we can make sure that people from Girdwood can qualify for those lots and hopefully get help paying however? But I wanna make sure that those are still on the board because those were promised. Okay, so I'm going on. Let's see, the Girdwood rider refusal, that was given in the very, very beginning. So I wanna know how you are going to put these lots up for sale. Connie, your husband's a developer, I'm sure you have a lot of developer friends. Don't answer me now, because I still wanna talk.
I am the developer.
So I'm talking about the builder, sorry, so the developer. So I wanna know how these lots are gonna be put on sale so that some builder doesn't come in, your husband or a friend or whoever, and grab up all these lots and force people to go through them to get a house rather than allowing them to buy the lot and doing what they want on the lot and having whoever build it, maybe even themselves. So lots of questions and then let's see. Yeah, so traffic control plan, trails, the Girdwood, or how are these lots going to be put up for sale? I definitely wanna see that published and not just kinda doing under the scenes. We need to make sure, you know, yes, everybody keeps talking about this NIMBY thing, it's not a NIMBY thing. We wanna make housing for people. We want neighbors, not investors. That's just the gist of it and I think that's it.
Well done.
So anyway, I gave you a lot of questions. If you need me to reiterate any of those, please let me know, but I would love to hear the answers.
Okay, so we have, that's a number of things and so I'm gonna kinda parcel this out. Yes, sorry, absolutely. Brian has an answer. Yes, sorry, absolutely. Brian has an answer.
I would just like to, Paula, last night at Girdwood Board of Supervisors, we acted on a recommendation from the Public Safety Advisory Commission to request a traffic study from L.A.S. Highway K8 to this.
Great, thank you.
So the Girdwood Board of Supervisors will be seeing about how to initiate and have a traffic study. I have no idea what the timeline on it is.
But at least there is one because right now there's not. Okay, but.
During the school year. And then now if I could refer back to the C Y Investment Panel for any answers that you might have, particularly about this question, I think about the buyers. I think because I forgot to call, I think it was about the rail realignment and traffic. But we have a question about kind of how do we make sure that we don't have a.
I think I'd like to take this back to the RFP really. Because there were two RFPs submitted, and one was for a builder who was also a developer. The RFP that we created was for the sale of lots only, and we made a commitment that we would not be doing vertical construction. There's also a commitment that says that I myself can't purchase a lot unless it's been on the market for at least 90 days. So the intent of our RFP was to be able to create a variety of home sites and a variety of opportunities in regards to when these lots will be put on the market. The development agreement requires that no lot can be sold until after the property has been completed and appraised. There can be an opportunity for reservations. A reservation is simply an opportunity with a deposit that when the plat is recorded and all of the construction for the lots are completed, that they will then have the opportunity to purchase. We are very concerned about how we're going to put these properties on the market and to accommodate the fairness that I think that is important. I don't know of a single builder, monolithic, or investor that would walk into a community and purchase all of the lots. That doesn't happen in Alaska, doesn't happen in the municipality of Anchorage. It doesn't happen out in the valley, at least to the best of my knowledge. And I've been in the development business for over 30 years.
Okay, thank you. I think the answers, Chase, you're open. And then if anybody else, if you could tip your hand so I can see anybody else who needs to add to the queue. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Chase Behrens. First, I just have a comment or a suggestion. In the first meeting, you had mentioned that obviously you can't control what buyers do on their own lots, but during the plating and putting out infrastructure, you, Ms. Yoshimura, said you enjoy trees, you don't want to cut them down, but there will be some that have to come down just due to infrastructure. I don't know what the plan is with that lumber or those trees, but it would be interesting if those were donated back to the community so they could be used for public art or for other infrastructure in one of the parks or something. I don't know what that would look like, but just wanted to put that out there. My actual question, though, we also mentioned during the first meeting, there was talk of, you know, having all of these new residents is going to be a boon for the businesses. It was saying our local businesses are going to benefit from this development. And I don't mean to be up here bringing muckraking rumors, but since this is a time to find the truth and you're here, I've heard from multiple sources that you or a company you're involved in or people you're related to own two restaurants in Girdwood and are interested in purchasing a third. I'm wondering if that is true, if there are any other businesses or business arrangements that you have in Girdwood as we're looking at these new residents coming in?
I have no business interests other than Holton Hills.
Okay, thank you very much.
Evening. My name is Shannon Noonan. Thank you all for being here again and conducting another meeting. Thank you all for your time volunteering. I had a couple of questions. One, while we're talking about infrastructure in regards to lights, paving, sidewalks, you know, I'd like to talk about, and Bethany could probably, excuse me, could probably speak more to how many open seats we have at the Girdwood School right now, which I think is around 30, 40, not that many. So if you're expecting, you know, a lot more families to be living here, which of course I think everyone would embrace more families living here, I want to know, does that fall, does that burden fall on Girdwood, the Girdwood School, to figure out how to handle a new influx of students? And in regards to even our tiny little mercantile that is usually sold out of most everything after the weekend, we get our deliveries on Thursday. Is that going to be a Girdwood problem to figure out when, you know, we can't keep those shelves full for more than a day with the new influx of population? And my other question, which might be a bit of a loaded one, but I'm okay with that. When discussing the Iditarod Trail, we're talking about all the rerouting, the labor, the volunteer hours, both on the trail and off. Wouldn't the simplest approach just be to reduce the size of the encroaching lots as opposed to put again a lot more effort, funding, and volunteer hours on our community? And that's all I have.
Okay, so do we have, do we have any answers or comments from C Y Investments on the?
Okay, oh, sorry. I'm going to address that question. I don't think you're going to love the answer, but I think we have a commitment to be as honest as we possibly can. And I would say, when a community grows in whatever form that takes, the community does have to bear the burdens and the costs and the benefits that come with growing. If the school grows, now that said, as much as Girdwood feels like a separate distinct community, it is part of Anchorage. And I realize that, but I know, I know. I realize when I look at the formation of even the, even G.B.O.S., which is one of the only decision-making bodies within the municipality outside of the Assembly and the Land Use Committees, I understand that it is, there's that odd tension there. I think we also see that in Eagle River. We just see it at the expanse of the boundaries of the municipality of Anchorage. So I'm not, but. And I also understand that the tax structure and the service area implications and all of those things are, can be awkward for the community. So, and I know that we can't solve those problems, but I just want, what I'm saying is the considerations for the school and the size and the students and the, and the resources, that is, you know, that is something that is a burden that G.B.O.S. and the community will have to face, and I don't think we have solutions for that. That's not the focus and can't be really because we can't come in and then sort of limit who would be offered those opportunities based on the burden they place on the community. That would lead to constitutional issues, even with the federal right to travel. So that is just, so again, I know it's not the answer you want to hear, but that is, that is a truthful answer.
Thank you. Any other comments and then we move on to the next question. All right, Emma, I see you online. I have one other, I'm going to take out this room to set her up and then. And then we'll take you.
Hi, my name's Alexandra Fletcher. I hate speaking in public. I have a restaurant here in town on High Tower Road, and I've been hearing all of these things about doing studies, traffic studies, about traffic going down, but you guys are in charge of this. Like, I don't see the point of us spending money on a traffic study when you can tell people to slow the hell down. It seems like a waste of money to me. Thank you. Like, let's just not waste our time. I mean, you are controlling this, so do better and control it. And this is what I tell my people in my restaurant. Just do better. Make it happen. And I don't think that Girdwood should have to spend any money or time or studies. My God, what a waste of time and money and a pain in the ass. No, you can control this. Please control this. And just have these people be a little bit more courteous about how they're behaving on the roads. And it will really impact Girdwood's opinion of how this is going if just the most basic people are more courteous in not running our children over or like the mayor of Girdwood, the white dog that runs around all the time. Like, do better. Can, if you lock this down a little bit, your effect on Girdwood will be so much less. Also, Holly Wells, you speak so well and beautifully. You need to get behaved more. That's all.
Thank you. Emma, actually, before we get to you, I got an audience note. Thank you for this, keeping me on top of things, guys. I meant that we didn't get an answer, and I know that Ms. Yoshimura and I have talked a bit about this, but if we could, there is an interest in more clarification about the two lots.
The A, thank you. The A.O. addresses, can you hear me? I'm not very good with buttons. All right. So the A.O. is very specific that there are two lots that are to be provided to Heritage Land Bank to purchase at some point in time, whether that's in Phase One, Two, or Three. That is totally at the hands of Heritage Land Bank. One is to be designated a single family and one is to be designated a multifamily for no less than eight. I am waiting for their decision to see if that is going to be in the first phase or the second phase or the third phase. It's totally in their hands. I have nothing to do with it.
Emma, could I ask for some clarification too from H.L.B. about that?
All right. We're going to get this to work one way or the other. I'm going to stand up and talk. There we go. All right. So as Connie mentioned, one of the changes that was made in the ordinance from the development agreement was the addition that H.L.B. would have the opportunity to purchase two lots. Again, as Connie mentioned earlier, they would be purchased at, they'd have to be for sale at,
Fair market.
Fair market value. And she is also right. We have looked at whether or not we want to do, purchase those lots in Phase One or Phase Two. Do we want to do the multifamily lot and the single-family lot in Phase One? Or do a multifamily in Phase One, which is the one that's being presented here, or wait until Phase Two? And then the development of those lots would then be, we would be working with the community of Girdwood as to what we would be putting on those lots. There would still be a cost to develop them. And somebody's going to have to pay to have them built, and then, you know, what do we do with them? And so I think working with Girdwood on, you know, the timing of the selection, we are, we are trying to figure out, is that something that we do in Phase One or is it something we do in Phase Two? So we haven't decided that, as she's, as she mentioned. But we may decide to do both at the same time. And if we're fortunate enough, we may be able to select them right next to each other. So we have a multifamily lot and a single-family lot. So we have two there. So we haven't decided that. We have been chatting with them about that. So I've also got Ms. Briggs on the line, who's the real estate director. If she's got some additions or guidance, then that's kind of where we are right now. Thank you.
I just would like to mention, I think that there was some question in Phase Two about the water table and the number of lots that are going to be on city waters. And I can't remember if I'm wrong about that. But anyway, hopefully we can keep active communication happening between G.B.O.S. and H.L.B. about those lots because the community certainly needs time to plan. And then in further answer to that question about the entity in Girdwood, a lot of the planning around those lots will be happening and some discussions have already happened at the Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. So that's the other part of the answer to that question. So hopefully we've covered that, but if not, send me another. All right, Emma, thank you so much. Your patience here.
Of course, thank you. This is Emma Kramer. I'm a Girdwood resident for 26 years. I was also on the Holton Hills Housing Advisory Committee. And so I did meet with you, Connie, back with Adam Trombley and Sam Daniel. Recently, I did also inform Holly about the particulars of Crow Creek Road. But before I get to that, since we are on the topic of these two lots, I just want to give a little context briefly that in the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, which was adopted by the municipality for this, that 2006 plan had a lot of information coming from other mountainous resort communities in the Lower 48, and it anticipated the housing crunch that we would be in now. And it proposed a series of ideas, which one of them included a housing authority, which I know we couldn't quite do. Others included percentage of housing that would be affordable. Others were to define what affordability did. And so the Housing Advisory Committee that I was a part of, we did that in our, in our due diligence. And now the Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee is doing similar things. So I really urge the municipality to listen because we have great advice. And when it comes to these two lots, the intent, I think it's important to talk about the intent. It was to let Girdwood have the ability to choose, which is something that Girdwood doesn't often get to do. And so for Girdwood to choose the nonprofit which it wants to go to or to choose the way that we want to hold that land in trust, a land trust made a lot of sense. The Girdwood Community Land Trust has been brought up over time. And so again, I just want to put that out there for the two lots. Circling back to my conversation with Holly, this is a direct question. And I forwarded this through George, so I'm hoping that you got it. But as we were talking about the uniqueness and often the muddy waters of understanding Girdwood and the, the service requirements of what we have to take care of, Crow Creek is actually quite clearly, especially where the Holton Hills exits are, is not a part of the service area. And so I think it's really important. And following the way things have gone, it doesn't seem like there's going to be any clarity about this issue, but I'm requesting that it be figured out and shared with as soon as possible about how those two exits are going to work, how they can be available to be used for emergencies and yet closed so that they don't, you know, infringe upon those, those of us who are paying for that road. And then finally, I'm just going to close with a bigger appreciation for Tommy O'Malley. I think he really set the stage with our, our comments. And in many ways, there's nothing that we can do, but I think we can learn a lot from this. And I still hope that the municipality can see that Girdwood's intent is not NIMBYism. It's knowing what, what suggestions we have for our community and trying to elevate them to the level where people are listening. Thank you for your time. That's also a question to Holly about the Crow Creek Road, please.
Yes, George did get that question to me, and I think it got, I think it got wider. I think it got sent out to the team to try to look into exactly how that road is impacted and what the service situation is. I know there was discussions regarding snow removal, all of those things, and how that interplays with the development. So I will just, I mean, I know the question is asked, those, those questions regarding that interplay, I don't have an answer for tonight, but I, I'm not sure. I think we might have an answer elsewhere on the panel. If we do not, that's a failure on my part, and I will get with George, and we will make sure that we are very detailed. And so we get that answer to you. Does anybody have those techniques?
I don't have an answer to that question.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay, we will get a quick follow up. Thank you. Just, just to add to, it, snow removal is most definitely half of the year, the issue. However, in addition, that five mile stretch of road, you know, it's quite historic. It's something that we can all actually really be proud of and celebrate, but it's in great need of repair. And this is a conversation with both the DOT and the municipality that's happening. So we're trying to, you know, bring the issue before it gets really bad so that it can be put on like a five or 10-year plan because it's not actually just snow removal and it's not just maintenance. There's some major capital improvements that need to be done on that road. Understandably so. It is built with corduroy logs laid side by side with rebar and dirt. So that's what we drive home on. And I, I do appreciate you looking into it. I, I think that the last thing I'll say is that the fire service area does not include our neighborhood. And so some of the issues is that the road isn't, you know, up to spec and the bridge up the top isn't done. And so if we're building all these things for new folks, we really do also hope that Girdwood folks realize that there is residents here that aren't a part of the service area. And it's hard for us to have a voice with, with the municipality as well. And so if we're working on Crow Creek, please don't just work on the bottom of the road.
I would say that the yeah. Our responsibility as CY Investments is to set aside $125,000 from the proceeds of sales of the lots to do the planning for the, for the internal extension to Crow Creek Road. And that is the plan for the first phase. The responsibility of the, the other improvements for Crow Creek Road are not the responsibility of the developer. Our responsibility is to provide the connection. Thank you.
But if the intent is to work with the community and you keep passing the buck, the point is, is that we are the ones who are responsible for that road. So if that road is put in and it's available for everybody to use and the municipality already doesn't see us as part of their service area, what is your intent for our community?
The intent from my perspective is to create homesites for the purchase and to follow the development agreement.
And it seems like another example where you sort of get something set in motion and then step back and let the effects of it be on our community and say, that's not what I deal with. So I will, I'm done now and I thank you for your time, but you can see where our anger comes from.
All right, I'm going to move on to Dave and I'm in online.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great. I just have a couple of questions and I'll just take, take them offline. And just if you could, if the team could please remind me how many lots are in each of the phases one, two, and three? And also, I was curious, what other, given the bifurcation agreement with Pomeroy, does CY have rights to develop those lands on the other side of Glacier Creek? Should Pomeroy decide not to? And are there other land parcels that beyond phase one, phase two, and phase three that is perceived in this project, the, the transfer of the lands or the disposal that, you know, could be developed by CY Investments? Thank you very much.
Could we start with question number one?
You got that one.
It's an easy one.
Hey, Dave, this is Tony Hoffman responding. All, so phase one is gonna be 39 lots. Phase two is in, we haven't fully designed that. There's a lot of constraints and we're still trying to figure out the best way to get density and utilize the land as it is in the waterline. And in phase three, we haven't fully planned that out yet either.
Can you give us an estimate of what could be? You know, because I've seen the old Platts or the old layouts. So just what would be your best guess for phase two and phase three?
I don't think that we can address that at this time.
Okay, well, I, I was asking Tony. Thank you very much, Tony. But would you go ahead? Connie, if you could answer the second, the other question, what other, if Pomeroy does, chooses not to develop the south side properties that they've selected or have their eyes on in the Mitten area, are, are, do you have rights to develop that? And if so, are there also, or even if there, are there other lands within the original disposal area that you feasibly think you could develop under this current agreement?
There are no other properties. I do not have a relationship with Pomeroy and I have no plans and I have no access to any other properties other than phase one, two, and three of Holton Hills.
Thank you very much. Tony, could, I redirect and just, could you give me a wild estimate? Like 40 lots, 50 lots or just something? You could go low if you feel like you don't want it to be put in, put into a corner for phase two and phase three.
Um, I've been instructed not to say. I think Connie, in the beginning of the meeting though, did mention an overall number, but I don't remember what that was.
87.
There.
87, yeah.
How many, how many is that?
Hold on, 187, more or less.
187, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Returning back to the room, Crystal, if you're up and then but you have two that's not supposed to, and yeah, raise your hand.
Hi, everybody. Crystal Hope, Girdwood. I want to, I guess, express that in regards to what Lance said about those lots for the community being identified, I think the importance of them being included in, in phase one. If we don't know, there's, it sounds like there's so much up in the air in regards to phase two and phase three, so much so that they might never happen. And so if we say, you know, we'll wait for phase two and phase three, what if that never occurs? And then the community never gets a lot. One conversation I had with Emma at HLB was that HLB would purchase the lots with the proceeds of the project. So if we know that HLB has already spent $2 million, 2.1, they actually transferred 2.5, and the proceeds to HLB are roughly 1.25, there's already a loss on HLB's side under phase one. So is there commitment from HLB to make those lots happen in phase one?
Um, thank you, Crystal. I think, uh, so let me back up with the 1.5 on the, you mentioned you have 1.5 in proceeds. I'm interested how we got to that number when we haven't sold the lots.
I thought that, okay, so I am basing that off of Connie's testimony at Assembly recently when they transferred the 2.5 million
Okay.
um, from the HLB fund. Also curious how work was already happening prior to the transfer of the funds. Also kind of interesting, where was that money coming from? If they approved the transfer after it was, had already started? But anyway, that's, that's what Connie had said when asked about the most recent performa because the performa we had seen previously was several, several years outdated. And so she had said that that was the HLB proceeds from phase one. And I'm like, okay, well, we're already, we're not recouping the costs of the offsite improvements. So how are we ever gonna get those lots?
Okay. So I think, you know, your thought about the selection of the lots in phase one is definitely something that we are seriously thinking about. And also, I think to the chair's point, you know, working with Girdwood and how, and I think even Emma's comment about the work that's been done. I mean, if that makes sense and that's something the administration is gonna get behind and something that we can get behind, there, there's no reason to wait. So I think, you know, that's a, that's a reason. That's something that we could definitely look at. We are seriously looking at whether or not it makes sense to do that now or do it in phase two. But your points, Crystal, make, you know, make a lot of sense. If there's a delay in phase two, then those, then those wouldn't be, if we didn't select in phase one and depending on the, uh, development process that they're going through with the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, the, we wouldn't be able to select until the plat is actually approved. And that's probably gonna be, I'm gonna guess sometime in 2027 or 2026. But then the, then the sales would go after that. So, um, and I don't think we have to decide today or tomorrow we're gonna do it. But I do really want to make sure that we're working with Connie and make that selection so that as she's marketing those lots, she knows which ones that we are interested in. And, and so, yeah, I'm certainly willing to continue it. And I think you made some really good points. If we do it now, then, you know, we can advance it. And if the phase two is delayed, then, you know, we don't have, won't be able to make that selection. My last point is, I do believe that there is interest in actually building multifamily, uh, structures on some of these lots. So, um, you know, the question is, do we do that? Let the developer do that or do that with folks in Girdwood?
Um, well, one, another follow up because I believe it was Meg Zalatell that included the, the language about those two lots going to the community. And I believe that her intent was for those lots to be donated. And so I do understand that the community or whatever entity is involved would be responsible for the, the development of what happens. I understand that. But I'm also looking for clarification if HLB intends to donate those lots after they purchase them.
Yeah, that's a good question. I believe that is the, the language inside the, if it, I don't remember if it's the language inside the ordinance, but it's definitely something we're also looking at. So basically, HLB would be purchasing them at far market value and then donating them to the community of Girdwood.
Thank you so much for those clarifications.
Do we have any more questions from, oh, come on up. Sorry, I don't know your name.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Skogan. I'm a student at Girdwood School. So as you guys probably know, there's two entrances to the Iditarod Trail behind the Girdwood School. And they're also the evacuation route for, I believe it's four grades at our school. And they were physically blocked off, but I think it was black tape. And I was just wondering why? Because, you know, that could pose a danger in an emergency, for example, a fire. Because how would four grades escape if it's blocked off? It would obviously be more difficult to, you know, get to a safe distance. So. All I have.
Thank you for your question. I, I think the answer to that is probably frighteningly quite simple in the fact that we were not aware that that was an evacuation route. I think our intent was to make sure that kids were not walking through an active construction zone. So that was, that was the primary focus was that, not allowing the community to walk through and, you know, create a hazard to the construction zone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that is, that might be the first time I've seen the other question.
We do.
All right. Before I take, and I, I know that it is getting late and I did make a commitment to try to wrap this up in a, in a two-hour window. And I, and I know that our, all of our members of the CY Investment Team need to drive back and they all do. And so I want to be kind of sent in the back and it's raining dark. I want to check, first of all, do we have any more questions from either the room or online from people who haven't asked questions yet? And then I also wanted to double check if we have any follow-up questions from?
I have something that I'd just like to say to the community.
Okay, and?
I'd like to hear about Connie first.
You want to hear about Connie first? Okay, and so you want to wait till it's all for right now? Okay, so we have, we have a few statements that we'll wait for now. And yes, please, come on up.
Hi, my name is Kathy Joy Holmes. And I just have a few basic questions. You've probably answered these before, but just to get some clarification, what was the cost of the land that you purchased, CY Investments?
The land is, the land was provided as part of the development agreement?
I, I thought I'd heard at one point it was $2 million for six acres.
That was an appraised value.
So is that what?
Yeah.
And then, so what is the, so you don't have a, a concrete figure on that? Or just a simple answer on that question?
The appraised value of the land was $2 million.
For 60 acres, was it?
The, and in exchange for that $2 million, there is 50% share profits going back to Heritage Land Bank.
Okay, thank you. And then what is the cost of the sewer line that's going to be going in?
That's yet to be determined, Brandon.
Correct. Yes, yet to be determined.
And who is paying for that?
Uh, for phase one, it'd be CY Investments.
And then phase two and three?
CY Investments.
Okay. And then what is the cost of the water line? Is that the same CY Investments pays for that? And you don't, do you have a price for that?
Well, the water main is in for phase one and it's, exists for roughly two-thirds maybe of phase two. So the main line portion of it is taken care of, so to speak. There will be costs associated with connections for water services.
Did the property owners will pay?
Uh, that CY Investments would pay.
And then the cost of the road that's in now? Was that, I, was that two and a half million that I heard?
That would be HLB's responsibility for the offsite improvements as part of the development agreement.
HLB? I'm sorry, HLB is paying for that?
Correct.
So the taxpayers essentially.
No, I don't believe so.
Well, that's.
So that's, I'm Cath, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy. So the Heritage Land Bank is paying for the road improvements that are there.
Okay.
And that is roughly about $2 million. What we don't know is the actual cost of the rubbish and stuff that we had dug up. So we're waiting to, it'll still be a little bit more than that. The two and a half million dollar number that you heard, that is the amount that we set aside to do everything with contingency. So the Heritage Land Bank is, uh, responsible for that. And I believe I mentioned this in the first meeting, Heritage Land Bank is not supported with property tax money. It's a self-sustaining fund. So basically, the revenues that it generates through, um, sale of property or development of property that uses to self-sustain the property so that it can be used for other purposes.
Okay, and so the road that's paved right now, does that, is that all that will be completed for phase one? Or is there more to be completed?
There's actually more to be completed in
For phase one?
Because the part that you're seeing right now is not inside the subdivision to be built. The part that's to be built will be connecting at the end of it. All of the improvements into the subdivision will be the responsible of CY Investments. They will be responsible for paying those things.
So from that point beyond where it's paved now is, will be paid for by CY Investments?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any federal or municipal money that is being contributed to this project? Any, 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 yeah, any funds?
I'm just gonna add something onto what Lance said and then we can answer that question because I think that question's probably gonna go to the utility, you know, some of the utility components. But I just want to also say, there's this expression that we are, got the land for free or that CY Investments got the land for free and that's not.
No, it's not for free. It's $2 million.
Well, and I think even more so, it's conditional upon a develop, the development of the property and then a share of the profits. And so really, we're not looking at a traditional, uh, this, this is not a sale in the sense that it is a pre-title sale. It's a partnership that puts obligations under the development agreement on the developer. And so I just, I want to make sure that we're being very clear because also HLB has these obligations as well in the municipality. So it is, it is really not a price tag that you can equate with a real estate sale because it's not a free and clear sale. So, but I do think your next question was about municipal and federal money being
Or state money used by the project.
I can, yeah. So, so HLB money is public money. It's just not property tax generated money. So it is public money. So that's local. There is no state funds or no federal funds being applied to the project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One thing to note, though, when we say there's no federal or state funds, and Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the event that those parcels are developed by a nonprofit or by a community trust, I mean, I think those parcels might be opened up for.
Yeah. To Kathy's point, there's no money in it right now to that. In the future, if a nonprofit that's supported by the state to build housing, then yes, but not now.
So we have Mike's in, I've heard two on the, he has been covering for us at the assembly meetings. And I, I know that, Mike, I don't know if you're still jumping in and out, but I definitely want to give you a chance to ask him questions or speak.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as, as Jennifer said, I've been at the assembly meetings. So I have missed some things. So if my question is already being answered, I apologize. But just to set context, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone who who's listened to me or spoken to me about this, but I I can't see how this project is really going to be successful for Girdwood. The our problem is community housing. It's not dark homes. We have plenty of those. And no other similar community, mountain community, has seen success in addressing that problem through this type of market rate development. And I think the the fundamental failure of this project was set at the very beginning by prior administration, but by not by basically saying that the market will solve the problem. The markets created the problem we're in now. This isn't isn't going to sell it. It isn't going to solve it through this. But my question specifically, and it's really one same question for both Lance and for C Y Investments, is what would how would you define success at Holton Hills? What do you think a successful project would be?
Mike, this is Lance. I'll give it a I'll give it a shot at first because I think finding a balance of a bunch of things that we're trying to do with a lot of different interests, and one of those being the interests of Girdwood, and that is providing housing, the type of housing that that is available to the folks that want to live in Girdwood. They may live here now and they want to move to a different place. They might not live here and they want to move here. Finding, you know, providing that type of stock, a variety of housing stock available would be one thing. The other one is developing a project that Girdwood would welcome and something that the development community and the residents of Girdwood would be more than accept, basically be proud of what we do and try to get everything that we can possibly do to meet the needs that you're looking for. That's going to be hard. That's going to be very hard. I'm not, I'm not kidding about that. And then probably the last thing that we want to do is we want to make sure that the development agreement for sure is followed because at the end of the day, through phases one, phases two, and phases three, this isn't, this isn't, you know, from a, from a financial perspective, from the H L B perspective, this isn't going to be resolved in 2026 or 2027. This is a long term investment, not only into Girdwood, but into for H L B. I mean, the development agreement, as Mike mentioned, you know, those that is the tool that we have. That's the guidance we have to pull it off. So we want to make sure that we honor that and that we try, we do our actual level best to provide an extension, an addition to the community of Girdwood. I've lived here for 50 years. I mean, I have been coming here for a very long. I know it does. I don't look like I'm that old, but I have. So it and I and I I've enjoyed Girdwood since I was a little kid. And so I I know, and I've seen it change a lot. And so I want to make sure that we try to strike that balance and it's going to be difficult. People that have lived here, people that have come here, you know, they enjoy what they see and things will change. Change is hard. And, you know, I just hope that we can strike that balance and get something that we can all agree with. And that's my goal.
Thank you, Lance. I don't know that I could say it any better than what you have already said. But I will tell you that my goal is to create a community, a neighborhood that we can all be proud of, that is attractive. And my passion is mixed density. And when I travel through Girdwood on the streets, and I've been here many, many times, you already have mixed density. You have two and $3 million houses sitting next to homes that were, you know, one story, one bedroom, one bathroom, that are sitting on lots that are in high contrast. You have very expensive homes. You have small, single family homes. You have homes that are 2,000 square feet, 1,800 square feet. You have homes that have double car garages, single car garages, no garages, carports. You have a wide variety of housing. So you already have mixed density. And I believe in social ladder of creating a wide variety of housing types. And my goal is to do that within the constraints of the development agreement, within the constraints of the A O and within the financial constraints as well that any lender or developer borrow would place upon themselves in order to obtain a reasonable profit, which is highly unusual to share that profit on a 50% basis. So. Thank you.
Mike, did you?
Could I just follow up briefly? Yeah, yeah. So I I appreciate those goals. I guess my concern still is no other community has had success or no other mountain community, resort community, gateway community, however we define it, has had success by just simply throwing the problem at the market and say, solve it. We ourselves, when we look at the housing that's been built here, market rate housing in the last three years, seeing exactly the same problem, nearly, you know, 80 odd percent, nearly 90% of those are dark homes. They're second homes. They're full time Airbnbs. We're seeing more homes being designed to be full time Airbnbs with no intent of anyone living in them ever. And I still don't see anything in this project that would come to a different conclusion. And I appreciate the wishes. It's I I just, I just don't see how it's going to get there. And I think that's a that's kind of a fundamental problem that started the beginning of this project. And I while I appreciate what's being said, and I appreciate there are some attempts to make some small changes. I just don't see how it's going to achieve the community's goals, which I think are probably more housing for the community, more housing that people live in. And I just don't see how we're going to get there. But, you know, I'm happy to be proved wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have, sorry. Oh, you have a follow up to that question. Okay. I just wanted to state where we are with the queue and the time. Melissa, you've been very patient. I do have to get a follow up. We have a follow up response from the or a question from the board. And then I have two in the room who have not spoken, I believe. Those, yes. And so you're on the list as well. And then we've got, not quite going to make our nine o'clock thing, but wasn't a hard deadline. We've got a couple of questions and wrap up comments from the board after that. That's our two. I know that we keep people wanting to speak again. I I don't know that we can, and we certainly can't fit a whole nother round. And so I think what I'd like to, I can say, I can commit to communicating with the developer about any lingering questions. And I will get your answers for you after that, if you've already spoken. Okay. And so Lisa, so we have.
So I I appreciate the heart and the intent. See it. I think that this statement is more for the municipality of Anchorage, which is not listening to Girdwood and and to Heritage Land Bank that the people who will buy properties and homes will probably not work here. They'll work elsewhere. They won't be able to afford to work here. So it really won't answer the question of housing here for people who wish to be here. And so they will probably be second homes and we know that. So I think that what I want to state for the record is that we desperately need a solution that donated land a lot. We need solutions from Heritage Land Bank and from our assembly for the people that keep this community going so that we can keep our businesses open, so we can keep our restaurants open, so that we can house people and they don't have to be just living. And we believe we will work you out getting here too. But we need some solutions. And then this will be the kind of housing that will fit our workforce housing needs. But I think it will be beautiful and I appreciate that it's an extensive very much. And I think that we will develop wonderful solutions, including best ones that will reflect our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and I'm going to jump to Melissa online. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, sorry. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. Thanks for coming out tonight. Also, wanted to let you guys know that there are 154 available Airbnbs if anybody on the board wants to stay the evening. Or you could hit up the hotel at $775 a night. That's also option if you don't want to drive back. I just sometimes find it interesting that we are always told we're within the municipality. However, we feel so far from the municipality and oftentimes when y'all come down, you too feel how far we are from the municipality. We've expressed that we're not against development, just not the way this is being presented to us. And we're never listened to. And that's fine. Just want to touch base on a couple of things. I do believe this land was given at $20,000 an acre. So I'm just kind of wondering what incentive you guys have to give any deals to any of us, given that you were given such a deal. Another question I have is why not make all no short term rentals? Why not make every property you sell no short term rental? The HOA lawyer states that there's going to be some duplexes, a couple of single family homes. Yeah, there's all these possibilities, yet all of it is against community approval. Again, that's just something I don't understand. Um, the two.
So you just got a question. Oh, can she go around? Okay, so we're going to jump to somebody in the room and see if Melissa.
Ari, I also think that at one point when Connie said that something to do with the RFP, that a house has to be on the market 90 days before it can be bought back. I don't think that's a very long time at all.
I said.
I also want to touch base on Emma's comment. Also would like to touch base on Emma's comment about Crow Creek Road. Saying something along the lines of how you're not prepared for questions that were previously emailed. I understand that it's a hard job. But I felt like that was a very valid question and needed to be addressed publicly. Although you will give a private email back, that's fine. Something also there about $125,000 for road maintenance there. I don't think that's going to be enough, but call me crazy. Last question, Connie had said something about she's concerned about how she lists these properties. Also that, you know, these things don't happen in Alaska, but they do happen in resort community America. So Connie, I would like to ask you a question. Why are you concerned about how you list these properties?
Well, first of all, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. First of all, $125,000 is for the to develop the plan and for the Crow Creek Road. And another misstatement or misunderstanding is regarding I am not allowed in the development agreement to purchase a lot unless it has been on the market for at least 90 days. And for your information, I think I've publicly stated that I don't have any interest in acquiring a lot in Holton Hills. I have other responsibilities and other opportunities in different locations other than Holton Hills. And then finally, in answer to your question about why do I have concerns about how these properties, these lots will be available for sale is because I would like to see a variety of homes created and a variety of builders coming into the community. It's certainly not my intent to have all the homes look alike, for them all to be the same size. We have, I hope that we will be able to have opportunities for duplexes, even a triplex.
Totally get that.
A single family home with an ADU. We have homes that will be on the uphill side and where the back of the the garage area, as long as it has adequate light and egress, could have an efficiency apartment behind it. We have lots on the downhill side that are designed.
Sorry, sorry to cut you off. I just wanted to finish up my question with, do you have any regrets? Is there anything that you would do different actions moving forward if you were to start this project all over again in terms of just how badly the community is opposed to it? Like, would you do anything different? Because I do feel as if Tommy, when he started the meeting, you know, he put his back to the panel just to.
I have several feelings about this project, but I think that it's best that I keep those private at this time.
We have somebody in the room who's been.
My name is Janine Hutchins. Thanks so much for everyone being here for our community. And thank you so much to the C Y team. I've been really impressed by Holly and Lance and Tony and Brandon and Taylor. Y'all have really come here with your best effort. And Connie, I'm so appreciative that you're here. And I would say, just like a bookend with Tommy, is that, you know, this is happening and we need to work together. And you said that you're not the builder, that you're a developer. So that this is your, this is your whole arena, right, is the getting the community involved. But what I'm seeing is a masterclass in oppositional defiant, like body language. And so you, something that might be helpful would be let's just like work on our positive psychology. Like when someone asks a question, say like, thank you so much. I really want to come and meet you here halfway. But I see a lot of looking down. I see a lot of oppositional like arms crossed. I see people that are like scooting away from you because it's like, oh, this is so awkward. And then you hire George from another state who can't even be here for the community meeting. So I know that you want to do your best. I know you have family that love you dearly and I want you to do well too. But you either have to hire someone that comes to Girdwood or work on how you want to be working with us. All of your language is you, us. How about let's move it to we?
I would love.
Thank you.
Have it go to we, but that's not how this project was started.
But you're an adult and you can be the person that's that role model. And I know that you can. I love that smile right now. I love that your arms aren't frosted. So like, let's do that and let's embody the positive psychology in the community. And that smile is beautiful. And so keep doing that. But I would really appreciate. So the transparency, we asked the questions we didn't answer earlier and then you wouldn't answer. Then you told your colleague not to answer it. And then I said, it's already on the record that you answered it. So anyhow, do some reflection on some of the say what you mean, mean what you say, and then we'll be here for you.
And I will be here for you if you treat me in the same way that you've just asked me to treat you. Thank you.
Amen.
And so I think we have one last comment. Ready our question?
Sure. Hey, Will Brennan, a question for Lance, just going back to the idea of the 50 50 profit sharing. I'm just curious if H L B has targeted where the their portion of the profits will be spent. Basically, I'm wondering like, is a portion of H L B's profits going to be invested in the Girdwood community?
So it's a great question. The first thing, one of the first things that we're going to do is we're going to re, we're going to basically re take the funds that we used to put basically by the road and use some of the proceeds to, you know, put the funds in the fund. As to Crystal and the others have mentioned, even I think Mike mentioned, when we have the parcel that we're going to donate, we're going to have to work with Girdwood on how we actually invest in Girdwood. And H L B is a good place to do that. How much? I cannot tell you, but I mean, it is a, it's a resource available. But I, I mean, if we. I, I mean, if we, when the lots are sold and the way the development agreement works, it's fifty percent of the sale of the lots after all bills have been paid. The cost of the water, the cost of the sewer, the cost of everything. So we'll find out what that looks like. And so, yeah, I mean, I think um that would be our intent. Get the fund financed because we up fronted the cost for the infrastructure and then, you know, use the fund for what its purpose is, is to support HLB activities.
Yeah, I would just encourage that at least a portion of it. I don't know what the right portion is, but a portion of it would be invested in the Girdwood community and not kind of equally distributed across the municipality because this community is gonna, you know, have outside impacts here.
Yeah, I mean, HLB, we have HLB property. That's a great question. We have HLB property from, you know, a clutinous of Girdwood. And so um but most of it is in Girdwood. Most of it is undevelopable. Um, you know, it's on the side of a mountain or it's covered with water. But yeah, no, that's a great question.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's close in here. Do uh, I think you have a statement, you have any questions, correct?
Yeah, I checked you, but.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Mort. Yeah, um, surpriseable thanks here. Um, I'll try to do rapid fire here and keep things moving real quick. So this one's for Taylor. Um, you mentioned specifically fifty percent STR restriction on each individual lot. Curious if you find a dwelling unit as an ADU and if that's being considered. ADU as a dwelling unit in your calculation for that STR restriction?
Uh, no. So the, the, a single-family lot with with one dwelling, one house, uh, would be subject to the no short-term rentals, right? But if if that same lot then builds an ADU on the lot, that ADU could be used for short-term rentals.
Got it. All right, thank you. I'm one to hopefully hear this is for the whole community. If you guys can go over kind of the next steps regarding planning and zoning commission and kind of the process over the next winter and how you can see it. Since a lot of people were not at that last meeting. So that's kind of for CY Investments and Lance. Thanks.
Um, Tony Hoffman, thank you. That's a good question. So as uh we discussed earlier, the application itself or the subdivision and the planned unit development and the conditional use application will all go in Monday. And it'll be finalized two weeks after that, after the city, um, the planners take a review of it, get back to us with comments and we submit the fee, which is not going to be cheap and um all the copies. So that'll start that process that we're currently in with this subdivision in phase one. Um, engineering will likely start after we get the approval. And um, I don't know that any longer than that, I can't. I'm just trying to get the application in and get all the pieces and um, we could talk about that.
Thank you.
Probably give you more answers later.
Cool. And when do you expect to see that PNZ?
January eighth.
January eighth.
Yeah, the first meeting of uh the year.
So we thank you. This one's more directed toward Lance and traffic. So Lance, I understand the traffic department does report for reference to you. So my question is regarding if traffic and Brad over there specifically looking at anything we can do regarding traffic concerns on High Tower and Alaska Highway for speeding trucks and other things upcoming into the following construction year for next summer.
Yeah, I, that was a bunch of great questions, a lot of questions about traffic. So I did take note on that. I will talk to the traffic engineer. A couple of things that we heard. One is the construction traffic and then just the daily traffic. Um, and so, yeah, I'm gonna talk to the traffic engineer about both of those.
Thank you. And then um, this was more for CY Investments regarding the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar um investment. So looking at your specific contract on section six point five, it does mention that is supposed to be expended at up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, supposed to be expended prior to phase one being completed. So just curious if you guys have had any uh, I guess I'm curious as to what the hundred and twenty-five thousand will be spent if technically phase two and phase three are where the roads will be connecting out to Crow Creek Road and how you can actually fulfill that section of your contract. Does that make sense, the question?
Well, I guess the best way to put it is there is a commitment to spend up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to make sure that there is a viable plan for the secondary egress. And that was negotiated uh quite extensively.
Okay, one more rapid fire question regarding how we're looking at our individual lot sizes, or sorry, um, law access. Um, I'm very concerned about water access since I believe that all residents of Girdwood and all residents of Alaska should have access to their water um front. So I'm just curious regarding kind of the development plan, if there's additional trails or considerations being put in for direct access through easements between properties to access water front on Glacier Creek.
We've had some initial conversations, but we're dealing with wetlands and very uh steep topography that doesn't make trails uh particularly walkable.
Okay. Um, and then the last thing is going to be regarding next summer when you actually do move into supposedly to do move into full construction development of this of phase one. Just wanted to kind of hear, make sure we have a standing impact to ensure that there's flag and other traffic controls near the school going into, you know, next fall. And if you do start construction potentially as early as April, making sure that we are protecting children and it's not forgotten because now off-site versus onsite, there's still traffic and they're still the same project to people. So.
We have heard you uh loud and clear uh with the circumstances that we faced just a few weeks ago.
Hmm.
Um, and I can assure you that we will do everything that we can do that's possible to make sure that safe, that there's safety for the the school children. We're very familiar with traffic times with what the schools uh letting out um responsibilities are.
Thank you. And then Holly, um, who pays your bills? Who, who, who are you contracting under? Who you work for?
Uh, CY Investments.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, let me correct that. I work at Rich Horton Vintage Row. It's a firm.
Yes.
So uh, I'm not in health of the, I'm saying.
But you're not under current, under contracts of municipality bankage that you're working on. So you're not, Lance and I guess municipality bankers that pay your.
No, although I represent a lot of municipalities throughout.
Thank you. I'll pay my quantification for another meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to kind of in the spirit of um Tommy looking forward and um trying to have some optimism maybe about our destiny. Um, I know that a lot of times in Girdwood, and this is like for us in Girdwood, um like, we feel like we don't have control over our destiny. We feel like we're not being heard. Um. I think the only thing that we can do moving forward is to continue voicing our concerns and our opinions. And um there are a lot of comments about traffic tonight. I'm psyched to hear that you're gonna look into that a little bit more. Um, one thing about traffic that I just want to put out as something that Apple can do, um read the this development agreement, it will explain a lot of the details of what needs to happen for other things to happen. So if we think that we need improvements on Crow Creek Road, then we need to figure out how to get the Alaska DOT and the municipality of Anchorage to require that there is some portion of Crow Creek Road that needs to be upgraded. And then that will trigger that the MOA will be responsible for upgrading the existing Crow Creek Road. And that is in the development agreement. And that's something that can be in our, you know, I can't, who knows if we'll be hurt, right? But all we can do is try and um CY is gonna follow the development agreement, right? That's why they have like two lawyers on the team. Um. And so the best thing that we can do is really familiarize ourselves with this agreement and what the legal requirements are for the developer so that we are informed and can then also hold the other development partners, i.e. the municipality, accountable um for what they have said that they're gonna do. And and there's a lot of outs, right? There's a lot of, like Emma was saying, where it's like things are gonna happen according to this document. Um, and we, there's things that we need to learn how to do so that we can get what we think we want and need. And hopefully that's a note of optimism and hope. Um, but it will, I think, require us to do a lot of work and to really educate ourselves on what this development agreement says.
I know we're all tired. I'm gonna start drawing things to a close. Uh, okay. It's a good, you can only have three minutes and then we are done, done.
All right, thank you. Um, my name's Jasper. I'm a student at Girdwood School, but I'd like to address like another concern with traffic. Um. So I'm not sure the sidewalk at the head of the construction site, I don't know how long that's gonna be closed for because I know it is closed right now. But uh, one concern I had was the bike to school day in the spring because I mean, there's roughly a hundred and fifty kids and staff that are biking there. So if uh, if there's like side dumpers or that thing's still closed, then we're basically biking on the road and that's not safe. And um yeah, I, even when uh, if it's not bike to school day, just on a normal day, um, I walk there routinely and there's still like rocks being kicked up by like vehicles and stuff. And yeah, I know it's been a concern before, but I just wanted to address that again. I've gotten like texts from students that were just like, because they heard I was gonna do this and they were like, you know, I, I also saw rocks, but yeah, I wasn't really prepared to do this. I like wrote this two minutes ago, but thank you.
Hey, yes, thank you for getting up and asking your question. Um, regards to the sidewalk, the um, the ADA panels were poured on Monday. And so they're likely protected for the next three to four days. I suspect by the weekend or early next week that uh, the protective measure will. Thank you.
Okay, so everybody, everybody here, thank you so much for showing up. Thank you for your engagement. I know it always hasn't been easy street. Um, writing us. Um, speaking just, I really, really want to just say that in terms of moving forward constructively and notes of optimism, just to tag on, but Brian is saying that I've appreciated uh being able to have some conversations with Connie and Kyle and our local astronomer about trying to warn me on, uh, sorry, but challenging the city a little bit, sorry, the uh, uh, streetlight requirements. And and I hope that we can continue to work with the developer and finding ways to at least uh find some overlap in our our mutual interests in moving forward in constructive ways too. And I believe that constructive conversation is uh in all of our best interest from this point out. So that is my commitment. So anyway, thank you. I am not going to talk anymore. I would take a moment here. No, sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry, George. Um, go ahead.
Hi, uh, George Passantino here. It's been a pleasure to listen in and engage with you. I've had an opportunity to meet with many of you in person and talk to the others on the phone. Um, I think that the dialogue is really constructive and just understand that when you engage with us with questions, concerns and comments, those are moved forward. Some of you may not have been at the previous meeting, so I just wanted to share my email address. It's george@holtonhills.com. Anything that comes up, whether it's an issue with uh traffic or a question about the project, please feel free to use that as a resource and I would be uh glad to pass it along and and try to get you as much information as possible. I appreciate all the comments that have been made here tonight and Jasper, well done on that uh uh, ad hoc uh statement there. Uh, but uh, yeah, again, so my email is george@holtonhills.com. And that's it.
All right. And special thanks to the young people. Thank you for speaking to you guys.
Yeah, I'll see you next time at first, George.
Thank you.